So we'll officially call the meeting to order. We'll let the minutes reflect that everyone is here from the Town Board with the exception of Mr. Moore. He will be coming in a bit later. He's traveling for business. And we'll also let the minutes reflect that we have some members of staff here with us as well. So, I'll call the meeting officially to order. We have our minutes of July 9th before us. If anyone would like to make a motion on those minutes. It's moved, seconded. Any discussion? Questions, concerns, changes, otherwise? All right, the minutes list and approved as written. Thank you, Lisa. Monthly reports, all monthly reports for June are in and have been received. We have no public hearings this evening. We have no registered guests. So we'll move right into our action items. And our first action item is under lawn finance, Five Mile Line Cafe signage and music. Mr. Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Jennifer and Sal, they are interested in the Five Mile Cafe. They're interested in two issues. I believe the first issue is to allow for internal music, fun music in the cafe. And, I'm sorry, the second issue was the signage issue where you wanted to modify the signage?
A and B to the sign. We have two sign topics.
Yep.
The freestanding and the building sign.
Was that live music?
Yes, like acoustic, one guy.
Okay.
What I've done, actually I'll give you a copy as well. What I've done for the board is I've given you a copy of their approval resolution of May 1st, 2013. And the reason I did that is because if you go to number seven.
Seven, right.
That is the issue. You're actually from condition number seven to allow for music on site. I haven't seen yet, and you have it now, I haven't seen yet any proposal for new signage additions.
Well, here's the thing. We had a guy come in for the sign, and he said, "Sal, I'll get to you in the next couple of days." And I haven't heard from him in a week and a half.
I called him yesterday.
He's on vacation, I guess. So I drew one up myself, what I think is going to be something, what I like, what I want to explain, but in this kind of color and format.
As a logo.
But in this kind of, the way that's, the way I would do it is something like that.
Restaurant tour, par golf, and a sign design.
Absolutely.
Don't forget Mason.
Absolutely.
I just went out without saying.
But Jim, the sign I want to put on top of the porch.
Like above the gutter?
Right over the numbers of the establishment.
So it would be, it would be actually roof mounted, it would be a roof mounted sign. All right. And we talked about the fact that we do not allow signs to be mounted above the roof line. It can't be used as the base for the sign itself.
But even though it's just a porch area?
Well, you can hang it underneath.
They can't, then you won't be able to.
Then people will hit their heads.
Be hitting their heads.
I wish I had photographs of.
Because there's really no spot because of all the windows. There's nowhere to put a sign.
What I was thinking is maybe six, seven inches away from the gutter, up, mounted like that, and then having lights above. It's the only way I can think about doing it, because if you put it on each side of the building, one way, one direction, north or south, you're going to get, not going to be able to see it. So if you put it on the building on the side, if you put it in the front, somebody's going to hit their head walking up. I mean, you can't make it that sleek, because then it's not going to really be noticeable. It's going to be a waste of.
Well, in addition to this board, the Historic Preservation Board would also have to review it. And I suspect, kind of an awkward situation this evening, because the board really doesn't have enough material before to make any.
And we're kind of just start, like, this is our first starting point to get information of what we need to do to move on. So we're not, like, pressuring you for an answer, or we just need to know what we need to do.
Aside from the current sign you have now that exists with the orthodontic sign, is it?
Yeah, that's our second issue.
So you've got that sign now. Now what are you trying to accomplish with, is it additional signage or instead of?
No.
Oh, additional.
No, it's additional. We have to have a sign on the building.
Yeah, and they are entitled to have a sign on the building.
Now, there's another way, I'm thinking, but I'm just looking at it. I don't want to make the same mistake as we did with the first sign, because me, with that color, I don't think it's working.
Were no one seeing our sign?
I would agree with that.
But if you look at the roof line of the porch, it goes like this. Then you got maybe, if I were to guess, estimated guess, probably four feet up to the other part of the roof. I mean, if I could put that against there, but I guess you're not going to see it. The trees, I mean, whether we cut down the tree.
Trees.
It's just not visible. If we go on top of that roof, I understand you don't do that, but it's the only option I can think of. If you do it on one side, coming from the north, from the south, you're going to be able to see it, but you're not going to see it from the north until you pass the building. Do you know what I mean? If you put it on this side, you're not going to see it until you pass the building elsewhere.
I do. And I'm kind of at a loss right now, because I really wasn't aware of the fact that we're looking for a second sign on the building. And you are entitled to a second sign on the building. It's just a matter of how it's placed on the building.
Figuring out how to.
Exactly. So I think we need, at least for the boards, they can mine, and we're going to do it for the Historic Preservation Board. We'll probably have to take some photographs of the front of the building, identify how you're proposing to put it on the building, and then look at options that we can, because the initial reaction that I have is that we won't meet code. And actually, you'd be the only ones that have that situation.
There's another way I'm thinking, is if I hang it like a flag off the corner of the porch, but again, coming from the north, you're not going to see it because the tree's in the way. So I mean, which way do you go? You put one on this side of the building, one on this side of the building? We only allow one, right?
Well, the freestanding sign should be the one that directs the Five Mile Line people.
And that's the other question that we wanted to talk about is, we would really like our own freestanding sign, like Dr. Wanamaker has, like Dr. Rowland now has. We, every day, I mean, every day, people go, "We drove past you, we drove again and again, and we didn't know where you," because there's a house with no sign on it. And then the sign that we have blends right in, and all they see is dentistry. That's it.
Yeah, we've said for quite a while now that the fact that both the signs are the same color and same design, which you're trying to get uniformity for the property, but it doesn't work in your case. And certainly, I think at one time, there probably was another freestanding sign on that property. The question I have, and I guess we're going to have to look at that for you as well, is because you'll have so many freestanding signs at such close proximity to one another, will it be beneficial for you to have it, or will people just look past that onto Dr., onto the doctor's sign, the dentist's sign, beyond you?
Or distraction.
Yeah, or, you know, I think that you're right. The sign is not working the way it is right now. We've talked about that a couple of times. I think we have to look at the best possible way for you to get it to work properly, and then also try to make sure we stay within the code as best we can.
But if we do something like that, I mean, this is just me from what I see. I mean, you got Mrs. Wanamakers, and then, I don't know, the new person, the other orthodontist. Then we got both ours in front of our property. And his sitting back, doesn't have to worry about nothing, and we're lighting it up and everything. Irrelevant. He's got that little piece right there, the little island. Why can't he put his there? That's in front of his building. You know what I mean?
Well, you don't want to put it in a place where it may block for, like, block vision as you come in your car.
It shouldn't. It shouldn't, right by that telephone pole.
I guess we could look at that.
It shouldn't hit that, it shouldn't hit any problem. You know, that's the other thing too, which I want to discuss with Mike. You know, a lot of people are not doing the one-way thing. I mean, I don't know if we have to put a sign out there to make a one.
It's really, really bad.
Really bad, in my opinion.
Maybe it's because we're busier, so there's more traffic in there, I'm sure, you know, but nobody knows.
It is.
Even my staff, I was like, "You keep going out there, we sure wouldn't know."
Absolutely. I mean, it's just even our distributors, they come in, I get mad at them, because I tell them, "You got to go around." You know, you can't come this way, and even though there is enough room for two cars, it just doesn't seem right. You know, people fly 100 miles an hour, they're thinking they're going through there.
Why don't we do this for the board? Why don't we take some photographs of your situation? We're going to have to look at some site distance issues, and also measure the signs to see where they are in proximity to one another. And in that time, you can also have your sign maker get something together as to what you'd like. And then we'll look at the options and see how we can solve the problem.
Okay. Like I said, if we could figure out the mounting on the house, I mean, I know you guys don't like that.
I'll look at that for you and see what the options are. And you might have other ones that we haven't thought about here, because we just don't have a good view of what you're.
Right. Well, the thing is with the signs, the way I have it is the way I explained it to him to do, because I didn't think about that you can't have it on the roof. I didn't know anything about it.
He may have some suggestions.
He did, but it's, the issue is again, where he thought we should put it, is, you know where our open sign is that lights up?
Yep.
Above that window. But again, you'll see it if you're going north, you won't see it if you're going south.
Until you pass the building. That's the thing. But like I said, the one that's hanging, like Upper Crust has, or something like that, I think that's called.
Yeah.
They have one hanging.
Yeah.
Then we got that issue with the tree. And do I want to spend the money to do it, and you guys saying, "Okay," and I put it up there, and then nobody, it's irrelevant to me? I mean, it's, I don't want to spend the money again on that same thing with that same color. It costs me a lot of money, you know?
Well, let's look at some options, and I think in the interim, before the board meets again, we'll have an opportunity to also go to the Historic Preservation Board, get a recommendation from them as well, so they can get that back to the Town Board, and then we can solve it all fairly quickly after we've got all the information.
Absolutely.
Why don't we put it on, Lisa, put it on the next work session agenda? If we could, we'll put it as an action item for that. Board, any input or additional information you need on the music component?
It's all inside, correct?
Well, that's what I wanted to ask you. I want to do, again, with the kid, I think, at night, because we're only going to be at night, it's not going to be during the day.
Right.
Because we're trying to go to a Wednesday, Thursday night, Friday night.
It would only be when the offices are closed.
Pretty much.
Nights and weekends. Probably not even weekends, because we're only open until 2:00 on Saturday and Sunday, so probably unless we had a function.
If it happens, what I would like to do is put one in the outside, just, you know.
In the back, we have that separate little side patio, and then we have our back patio.
How often would you envision doing this?
Maybe Friday.
Inside, probably.
Once a week, maybe twice.
Maybe twice.
If we find a.
It all depends on money, you know? It costs a lot of money to have a person, you know, play there. But during the summertime, I mean, you want people to hang out outside a little bit, you know?
But you don't have that much seating outside. Is it worth your effort for the number of people who'll be out there?
We got, yeah, well, yeah.
Got tables.
We cram them in there.
How many seats do you have for the outside?
Right.
Probably five times.
No. Four tables or seats?
About 20 seats.
20 seats?
There's about five tables, and you can put four. I mean, it would be maybe just for a cocktail.
Yeah, he gave us, I think, was it Tom, the fire marshal?
That, yeah.
He gave us, I think, 20 outside.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I just, I remember that we talked about it, and we got the approval, I just couldn't remember what to say.
But I don't think I'm going to have an amplifier where it's going to be.
No, it would just be like a cappella. We're small, it's not going to be like, yeah. Even if it's inside, it would be a cappella. No microphones, no.
Absolutely. It's not that big of a spot, so you really don't have anything.
A guy playing a guitar and singing some Dave Matthews-y type music.
And that's if.
Yeah.
We might not even do it. You know what I mean?
Well, I don't necessarily have a problem with the acoustic music.
I don't know either. There's not, it's not like there's a lot of residences right there that you have to be that concerned about in that area.
Absolutely. There's three houses across the street.
They might haven't hear it from that distance.
No, they probably won't.
Just some good hours.
As long as it's not amplified.
Right.
Well, that's what, I don't want to amplify. Number one, I don't like the loud music myself, so I mean.
We don't want to hear.
Are we okay, Kaz, going forward with that approval with conditions for music without having any sort of public hearing notification?
That is a good question.
We did just have one for edicade, just to be consistent.
Right. And one of the conditions of approval back then, and it was an issue, because you're right, it's a different era now, there were more residences in the area than there are now. A lot of those properties converted to business use. But it was an issue back in the day. So I, I mean, I hate to put you through it, but we might have to do that, just so that people know. And it'd probably be good for them too, because people will then know, and they'll know what the, what their intent is.
We're not, we're fine with that.
We're fine with it too. I just want to do everything, I just want to make sure we get it before we can do anything.
We got a lot.
I don't imagine any, you know.
No, I don't think, I don't, I can't imagine it to be a big issue, but I think just to memorialize that you're trying to resolve that condition number seven to a new light, it would probably affect you a little bit.
We just want to treat all the businesses.
Because right now, I mean, if everybody at this table for some reason isn't here in a few years, and somebody says, "Hey, you got a guitar playing out there, you're not supposed to have anything." You don't have anything to hang your hat on but this document.
Right.
I think that.
Other than the excellent minutes that Lisa grossed in taking for the meeting tonight.
That's true.
And you'll still be here, so.
The other thing.
You're going.
The other thing, the other thing is too, just to help you guys out, you know, for your decision, is we're going to be closed at 9:30. So I mean, it's going to, music's going to be before 9:00, you know, it's going to end by 9:00.
And it would probably be like, you know, what do you do, like maybe 5:00 to 7:00, or 6:00 to 8:00?
Something, you know.
It's not, you know.
Because we're going to be closing at 9:30.
We're not going to play until 9:30, because we want them to get out at 9:30 so we can go on their way.
I don't have a problem with it, I think just procedurally, I think, to be consistent.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Which is fine with us.
And then you've got the proper approvals and conditions, and nobody had, everybody is on the same page.
And really, I think the true benefit is to have it more inside on a nightly basis, or whenever you're going to have it versus.
Well, absolutely. Once in a while, it might be outside.
I mean, fit it tonight, so.
We want to just get approval for both, so we can play up there, you know, when the guy comes, "Well, you know, what do we want to do, in or out?" Just so we have that option.
I'd almost be inclined to say, but we're inside. We could almost live with the process of doing that inside, but the fact that it's going to, if it's going to go outside, I would say.
That's my thought.
So I mean, if you want to, you know, we have other people all over town doing that inside, and it's not that big of an issue. But certainly, if you want to do it outside, I'd say we'd hold a public hearing just so that people know.
That's a good clarification, because I'm fine with the inside. It's the outside part that, you know, we want to make sure we're consistently treating everybody who comes in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
More of formality, but I think it's an important one.
Yeah. And we'll work with you to come up with an answer for the signage, and we'll bring that back to both boards and let them.
Do you want me to take the pictures and email them to you, or?
It would be very helpful, but I think I'd like to come down and visit you, just for two minutes, we can talk about what your ideas are. And if you get your sign person to get everything together for you and get that squared away.
Can I bring up another issue while I'm here, or is it, does I have to go through something? It'll be real quick.
This, you know, we, this, we run, yeah. So if there's something that you need to chat about, what I would encourage, maybe grab in, Kaz, or if you need a broader, broader item. Because what we do is we advertise these agendas, and so we try to stick to the agenda so that someone doesn't accuse us of saying, you know, "You're talking about all this stuff without advertising it and what have you." So we have the music, we have the sign on there, so we'll follow up with that. But if there's another item, or if you want to discuss that more broadly, when you come back here, we can add that to the agenda as well.
So what was the date that you?
It would be August 13th.
I'm just looking at my calendar, Kaz. Our next Historic Preservation Board meeting is, do we have one scheduled for August?
It would be the first Thursday, so it's got to be around the 7th or so.
Should be the 7th.
So we got to go in front of that too, right?
Yeah, that's kind of setting you up here with the board, just going through what you want. But I want to be able to give them a recommendation for you as to what the appropriate situation is for the sign.
So you want us to come the 13th, and then go to the following historic board?
No, no, I want you to come in on the 7th.
Okay.
We'll, I'll set that up with you this week.
Okay.
And then we'll go through that with them, and then they'll get a recommendation back to this board for the 13th. And I'm assuming that we'll have all the information regarding the signage by then. The Historic Preservation Board doesn't care about the music issue. That's not what we're going to be looking at with that.
There's going to be purely the signage.
And that's good timing, because then we'll have the recommendation from beforehand.
Now, if this guy doesn't go, I can just get somebody else.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, and certainly, we can make several recommendations if that's the case, but, you know, I'm sure you've got the right persons to manage all this stuff together. And we can talk tomorrow about that in more detail, too.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If not before, we'll see you on the 13th.
Okay.
We'll see Kaz and Paula on the 7th.
And by the way, fantastic 4th of July parade. Just want to say that, really.
Congratulations.
It's awesome. I know, thanks for not canceling.
Thanks for not canceling.
We had a blast.
Very good.
Thanks, guys. Not even Tony would cancel two years in a row.
Okay, we'll move on to Public Works. Mr. Valentine is next up on the docket.
Mr. Supervisor, first going around is a letter that we received on behalf of Nick D'Angelo, D'Angelo Builders. They are currently before the planning board for 1469 Jackson Road, which was the Way Farm. They have proposed an 11-lot subdivision. It is a cul-de-sac street, it's up on the back wall. They are asking for a full waiver from the sidewalk policy, which requires both sides of the internal road and the road frontage. The planning board was supportive of the waiver. PRC recommended, or PRC's recommendation, was to have the sidewalk on Jackson Road itself installed along the frontage, knowing that other development may be coming, you know, further to the north or to the south and could tie into our system. But PRC was supportive of the internal waiver, but thought we should install it along the road. So obviously sidewalk waiver falls under Town Board's purview of what you'd like to do with that. The letter before you, from Mr. Kiefer, acting as their agent, is asking for the full waiver, but said they're supportive of paying the $500 per lot waiver fee.
So internally, it would be requiring, you know, both sides of the cul-de-sac?
Yes, this is the portion, this is the portion that's supposed to be dedicated to the cul-de-sac.
And it looks like only homes on one side of the road anyway.
Yep, and then on the other side, and then off the end is a private drive that would service three homes on the back end of it. So this is the piece here. PRC is recommending installing the sidewalks along their frontage on Jackson Road.
And that extends, extends the sidewalk that's already?
Currently would not connect to anything.
Wouldn't connect?
No. The sidewalks.
We have sidewalks to the south.
The sidewalk to the south.
To Penfield Center Road.
On the east side.
On the east side to Penfield Center Road.
It's at Penfield Center Road. We extended those up to.
So we already have that, you're saying?
We have that there. This would currently not connect to anything, no. But with future properties to the north and, you know, potentially the south developing in the future, you could take the money, you know, we would always take the easement for it.
Yeah.
No matter what, and then take the money somewhere else.
Yeah, I would go for taking the money and using it for some more logical connection.
Well, so before we just, before we say that, I mean, the PRC, you know, kicked this around and had some recommendations to put the sidewalks in. So we got, we got three members of PRC here that I would, I would at least ask them to.
While the property to the north, the Fink property recently sold, we anticipate that it was sold for development purposes. There's a single-family home on the site, but there's several vacant acres that provide a housing tract to accommodate.
So I think the thought is if the sidewalk's. The Fink property develops, this property develops, now you have the Town Hall property here. This is a destination point. Installing this piece, then we could use sidewalk funds to fill in the gaps, but it gets you that much closer to the Town Hall complex if those neighborhoods develop or, you know, most recently, we were looking at the east side of Jackson Road as part of the, you know, I know we're not moving ahead on that.
But that's not happening right now, so couldn't we take the money with the, if that happens, then we could put it there, but if it's not.
Our current policy only takes $500 per lot. So you get $5,500, which at current rates of $40 a foot, doesn't get you very far.
I would support PRC's recommendation.
I think that's one thing we should look at in the future, is updating that waiver fee cost. I think it was adopted back in probably the 90s. Obviously, concrete cost has increased, and it's time to be supportive of that.
So you'd get more bang for your buck if we go and do it with the recommendation, thinking along the lines of potentially that being developed versus taking the money and doing it because you wouldn't get as much out of it?
I think you can do both. You're waiving the internal sidewalks, so I say you still collect the $5,500 for the internal sidewalks that they're supposed to put on both sides of the road, and require them to put it on the road frontage. So I think you take the money, $5,500.
Okay.
Put that in the general fund and have them install the sidewalks along the frontage, and then the $5,500 can pay for sidewalks further down Jackson.
Okay.
I mean, to be in full compliance, they would have to put it on both sides and on the frontage.
That's a good.
The developers, you know, still getting, you know, a benefit of not installing those individually. It's 1,000 feet internally.
Right.
You know, so you've got 2,000 feet of sidewalks, you know, internally, and the road frontage is full compliance with our policy.
Good, good with that?
Okay, so. Second piece, number two of this is, is part of this, they are proposing dedication of both the green piece, which is the pond lot, and there's an extra wide right-of-way, which is the orange strip. I kind of highlighted those separately. We are proposing a special improvement district, as we've done in other locations.
Right.[1435.25]
But just knowing that they're dedicating property, we wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable with it. If it isn't a special improvement district of taking that ownership of land would be town-owned, the one piece is as a wide right-of-way and the other is, you know, for the pond area. It does about the nature conservancy on both the south and the west. PRC has had some concerns with dedication of at least the green portion being just for future maintenance, getting in, maintaining the pond functionality and everything else if it is owned by someone other than us, even if we had an easement over it.
Yep. So that recommend, so the recommendation is that we do?
PRC's recommendation is to take the ownership of it, but incorporate it into a special improvement district, so it is paid for by these 11 owners. So if in the future they want a fountain, they want whatever, they're paying the cost themselves, whatever level of maintenance they want, whatever level of a fountain or flowers or whatever they want, it's paid by those 11 neighbors. It's not paid by, paid for by the greater town of Penfield.
Is this, this one, we bring this up again?
Mm-hmm.
No, it's been a held item for a while.
It has been a held item for a while.
I mean, that comes back to the, as you're referring to.
Held item.
Held item, number one.
Number one, right.
Special improvement districts, pond ownership. But this is currently before the planning board, so again, anytime we're taking property.
The right, the right discussion is to have it right here. I mean, we certainly, we certainly are, look for and welcome, you know, input feedback from the staff and from PRC and what have you, but, you know, I think it still isn't coming upon us to, you know, weigh in on that, on that final, final resolve. Jeff, the, the green area, is that, is that designed to, to serve solely that property, or is there an opportunity down the road for it to, to support other properties adjacent?
We're kind of restricted on the size of the parcel. You can see here, this is the wetland buffers. In fact, this is actually in the buffer.
A little piece of it is in the buffer, right?
So it'd really be difficult to expand. Nothing'd be big enough for anything development to occur north of it.
Okay. And then nothing, nothing that would flow from east to west through that, through that parcel?
No, no open spaces.
And then the property to the south of the green and to the west of the green, who owns that property today?
Nature conservancy.
So they own right to the Jackson Road, right there in the south?
This is the pond that's on their property, a portion of it, and this is their piece all the way back.
Got it.
Do they have any trails or a trail system?
Actually, there's a trail easement right here. You can see part of it.
There's an access easement that exists currently. They'd like to keep that maintained. They don't want to see a trailhead or new trailhead in this location at this time.
Which makes sense.
But they use that to get in and mow the fields. I guess they mow them for birds and stuff in the back, so they use this currently to get in access with a mowing machine. You know, they said they were fine coming off of, whether they came off the road or whether they, you know, followed the trail. And they said they're fine. They'd like to maintain that just so they can get in and mow the fields, but they're not looking for an additional access point.
Okay, so they would now be interested in having some form of trailhead there?
Yeah, we asked them, you know, whether you could use this lower area as gravel parking area or something if, if they wanted a secondary access. They said, not at this time.
I would think that they want to keep everything somewhat centralized and have it spread too far.
That's been their standard is to kind of keep it on the access right next to the highway garage and.
Okay. So, so the, the issue is, you know, special improvement district, and then the recommendation is, is that, you know, we take, we, the town take ownership of the, of the property, and it becomes part of our, part of our, one of our 130, now six, or seven?
150.
150 ponds.
So I, I can't remember the last time we did one of these. I don't know if it was Ashland or wherever it was, but where did we leave the notification process? So when the homeowners come in and they're paying for a special improvement district and one leaves and a new person purchases the home, and how, how is that notified to the homeowner by the developer, the real estate, the town? I mean, I, I think that one of the major issues that we had when we discussed this last time was that they would look at this and think it's a phantom fee of some sort by the town or not understand what it is if it's not conveyed after the initial sale when the home is built. So.
What happens is after the town board creates the district itself, improvement district, it's recorded, we're required to file an order with the Department of State, the Attorney General's office, and it has to be recorded at the Monroe County Clerk's office.
Okay.
It then goes into the title abstract so that when a property is purchased, the attorney reviews the title abstract, identifies that there's a special district, and usually contacts our office or contacts the assessors to find out what it's about. And Jeff had brought up a good point because this is kind of something new for us. Back in the day, we would just take the land and just mow it periodically if we needed to or just maintain it if we needed to. It's a different situation with the special improvement district because, for instance, those 11 people come to the town hall in a couple of years and say, you know, we're paying for the grass to be mowed around the pond, which is great, and we're paying X amount of dollars for that. We would like to put in a, a fountain in the middle of that pond for aeration purposes, and that fountain's going to cost $5,500.
Right.
So that then, since they sit down with the town staff and we identify the costs associated with that, and that, when it's determined that they want that, what the cost for that's going to be, that is then put into their, their budget for the following year for the maintenance and installation, and then they pay that fee on an ongoing basis for maintenance purposes.
So we would own it and have to maintain it, but they would get to dictate how it looked?
Well, they, they get to tell us what they like and don't like. In essence, I mean, we can, if they're willing to as a group, and certainly this board's always been judicious about, you know, having a 50-50 situation where I want it and you don't. It has to be a high number of people. Out of the 11, you'd probably want to have nine or 10 that would, would want it. You're always going to have one person possibly that doesn't, but you certainly want to have a high percentage rate of people that would want something before you would consider, you know, going through the process of installing.
We wouldn't really, they wouldn't tell us how to maintain it. We would maintain it to keep large trees from growing so that we have access to the outlet structure and we can make sure it functions. What we're, the district's purpose is to go for any additional items such as a fountain, lighting, a sign.
Silence, yeah.
So that would be above and beyond what the normal services provided by the town of Penfield would be.
Our goal, our goal ultimately is, you know, keeping it functioning, you know, that, it's not, it's not, it's not to look like, you know, Honeyway Lake or Canada Dable Lake or anything like that. Our, our goal is to keep it functioning, to do what it was designed and intended to do, and to provide some level of maintenance. Tree falls in it or if we have to clear a structure, as Jeff said, or something like that. But then above and beyond that, you know, if they want, above and beyond that, then that comes at a premium, or comes at a price.
Ideally, what you have is built in, creating the district before all the homeowners move in, it's built into their taxes, it's built in as a district formation, so you have, you have the entity created, so if and when they all decide they want a fountain or something else, and obviously they could petition the town to, you know, to add that, but that district is already formed and is in place to handle that.
Ideally, you'd like to let the pond go back to the wild state around it.
So they would be, they would be charged accordingly.
And, and they may not be paying very much at all depending on.
Well, that was where we kind of left it at the last discussion.
Right, because I know where you're going with this.
Right, now we start with a zero.
Absolutely. So all of a sudden, the town of Penfield throws $1,000 onto their most recent bill and, you know, it's maybe for their fencing or whatever they want to do with that, but again, you know, I, I, I'm very hesitant. I don't think my position's changed. I think I'm very hesitant about the town assuming control of what I would consider, you know, amenities that aren't necessary.
So, so what, what's your alternative?
Well, this is why it's been a held item, I think. I mean, we don't have, I mean, we have, I don't.
Similar concerns. We have Camden Park as one example. Camden Park formed a homeowners' association. They're pretty much in default right now. I'd assume they're going to be coming before this board shortly saying, they haven't collected a fee in forever. I don't think anybody's paid the taxes on the property. No one's maintained the open space areas. Half the residents probably don't even know there's an association within the district, so at some point, either that's going to default, go back to the county, or they're going to be before this board saying, hey, will you take our property? So I don't know. And that was one of the.
That's an example of how this could go full circle. That's an example of how this could go per, full circle.
Well, and actually, this is a better situation than we've had in the past. I mean, since this board's been acting on these districts, at least you have a mechanism in place now to charge it back to those individuals that benefit from it. Back in the day, we took a pond because we had to take care of regional maintenance of that pond, of that, of that stormwater. We just took it, now we're maintaining it, and they're not necessarily paying for it. I mean, everybody ends up paying for that. If they don't, then everyone's specifically benefited from it. In this case, now you've built a mechanism in place where those 11 people are going to pay for the maintenance of that pond, whatever it may be. It may be minimal, it may be something that they want or need that we haven't thought of at this point in time, but now at least the mechanism's there for them to pay for it, not all the rest of us and the rest of the town.
Okay, so I'll just throw out a hypothetical here. Let's say they want to put a couple benches up there, okay? Let's say I'm walking my dog down Jackson Road and I decide it's a beautiful day, I want to sit down on the bench for a couple of hours. I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly capable of doing that as a town resident, right? Even though it's.
It's town-owned property.
It's town-owned property.
They're just paying for the maintenance of whatever happens in that town-owned property.
Or take it a step further. Is it, is it the district's bench?
Good point. If the district pays for it.
It goes in disrepair and it's like, it's like the entry signs to subdivisions.
Yeah.
And that's another reason to have them because again.
Look nice in the beginning, right? And then over time.
Falls on one resident's slot and.
Yes, if she's paying care of it.
So I, I guess back to your, your question earlier, Tony, I guess the alternative then would be, it would stay within that district. It would be owned by the 11 homeowners without town oversight at all, and we would have whatever necessary easements we would have to go in and make sure that, that pond is working properly. Is that correct? Is that the alternative?
Yeah. It's mowed twice a year, we inspect it.
No, I think Rob is saying it would be a private pond.
We have access to it for rental purposes.
It's owned by one of the lots.
If it's owned by a lot, oh, then it'd just be an easement.
Right.
That has not worked out well in the past.
No, because one person owns it, they tend, that's when you start seeing the sheds and the docks.
And the problem in this case is you don't have the ability for a person to actually put a single-family residence on that property, so you've got individuals that.
Designate it too.
Yeah, they're, they're absentee landlords of that property and they're not, they're not, they're not going to take care of it themselves.
The name of the sign on H O A is Camden Park, which could be put back on the tax rules at auctions.
Well, currently they're before the planning board. In fact, did they just recently get their?
They just went through preliminary final, the public hearing, the board tabled it after the last meeting, pending resolution of some of the issues of ownership behind the sidewalk waivers, so.
So, so to answer your question, do we have to make a final decision tonight? No. But what we, what we're faced with is over the next couple of weeks, it'll be back, it will be back before us for some determination as to what our, what our next step is going to be. So we can, we can hold it and carry it as a held item for two weeks and.
Next meeting is the?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth of August.
So, three weeks from today.
Would it be time to maybe dust this one off and relook at this so we're not doing this ones one at a time?
It, it certainly would be helpful.
Yeah.
Certainly, certainly would be helpful because, you know, the 150 plus or minus ponds that we have, I mean, if you, if you think about it, so I, I just want to make sure I'm not making a misstatement here, Jeff. You're the, you're kind of the, the stormwater management officio, but essentially, the way the new stormwater regulations are written, as I understand it, is, is that if, if a property is being developed, they have a responsibility to, to manage that water and ensure the water quality of that before it leaves, leaves the site.
Yes.
So anytime that you have more than what I would call just a couple of lots on a, on a fairly large parcel, but every time you have to evolve, there's a high likelihood that you're going to need some type of a retention facility on, on property. And so then that, I think, increases the opportunity for us to, you know, see more ponds, you know, in the town.
We used to have a lot of dry ponds, and they still have some. That's when we were just managing the quantity component. Now we're doing the quality, which makes the ponds larger and they like to see them full of water. So the aquatic vegetation deals with the pollutants.
So I think, I think your, your point makes a lot of sense is that item number one needs to come out of held and into action, and it should be, it should be kind of, we talked about that, that will then cascade down to this and others down the road.
We have to dedicate some time to that, so. I don't know if we do a separate meeting or whatever, but we'll have to figure that out.
Yep. Okay. All right. So we'll show this, we'll show this item one, how we can, we can proceed with the sidewalk component mark.
Yep, I'm going to send a letter on behalf.
You'll, you'll do that on our behalf, and then it sounds like we're going to regroup with, with this esteemed group to broader discuss special improvement districts, pond ownerships, and then also, you know, then this item. So, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else on that one? Okay, see, and then we'll move on to will upon dam dam.
Uh, yeah, something we've been talking about for a couple of years now. The original proposal from Barton La Judas was October 17th in 2012, where he approved a contract for $18,000. Upon submission of information to the DEC, they requested additional studies above and beyond the original scope where we made an amendment to that contract for $3,500. So as of now, it's a $21,200 contract. The permit was submitted to the DEC, that's this binder right here. DEC issued some comments, we sent some copies of the plans to Perrington. They came back with a, a letter in January of this year asking for some additional consideration to reduce flooding to the downstream parcels in Perrington. So on the, in September, January of this year, the DEC suspended their review pending us getting together with Perrington and resulting what's going on. Since then, we, DEC did an inspection of the pond. They do an annual, they're doing a periodic inspection. They're not restricted to how many times. This is roughly, they did the last one probably two years ago. They found some basic maintenance issues, some growth on the banks that they wanted cut, but otherwise, everything was pretty good. The, the bad news is, there's a couple key steps that we need to do some, an additional follow-up. We have an emergency action plan that's required as part of the project. That needs to be, that was last done in 2010. That needs to be updated with new contacts and new numbers of calls. You have changes in staff, we have changes in emergency service providers, that kind of thing needs to be added in there. There was also some requirements for now a, a dam safety or emergency action plan update and an engineering assessment. The engineering assessment is not an annual requirement, but they do require that the first one be done within six years of the initial start of the dam assessment. So we're at the six-year stage. That's got to be done, and that's got to be done every 10 years to keep up with our dam permit. So we need to do that. So they, they have submitted a proposal, Barton La Judas submitted a proposal to us for a not-to-exceed figure of $12,500 for those remaining additional items. Because of the amount, the consideration of how much it's already at, it's considerable enough that supervisor and I felt it was necessary to bring it here today and kind of review that with you and get permission.
Is this still for the, the goal of declassifying it?
They have officially declassified it as a B dam.
So now this is sort of.
This is B dam requirements? These are the requirements of a B.
We were a C.
We're still, we're now in B dam requirement?
A C dam.
You didn't want a C. It seems as though it was much worse.
I guess this is sort of the, the homework or the paperwork that needs to be done after we were declassified. Is that correct?
Correct. And then to, to assist Perrington, there was a pretty simple fix. The good news is we're switching from a 12-by-three concrete box to a 48-inch round pipe. That'll save us some money. Bad news is we're going to increase the berm that runs on that piece of land between Perrington and Webster, so we've got to bring in some fill and there's certain requirements and construction requirements.
Perrington and Penfield.
Perrington and Penfield both, yes.
Yeah, versus Webster.
I say Webster, sorry.
On board.
Just want to make sure, just want to make sure that the increase cost.
Lisa already cleaned that up.
All right.
So take, take us back, Jeff, just in terms of this, the, even going back to, you know, we, we had a process by which we approved an $18,000 contract, and then DEC came, based around what we thought DEC required, correct?
Yeah, when we submitted the application for the permit.
They came back?
They came back with some review comments.
Okay, now can you give some more details on what they came back with that led us to have to be required to spend an additional over $3,000?
They asked for a. You're going to love this stuff. A stability analysis evaluating three basic load cases, an evaluation of material properties from soil borings, and evaluation of liquefaction potential of the embankment.
Okay.
Liquification is basically turning it into quicksand.
What?
It's, it's when the water saturates the soils and it kind of just gets running.
So the.
So they don't let the dam to wash away.
Yeah, they want additional, yeah.
So they asked for some additional analysis. Fortunately, the borings were done from years before. We just provided a soils report, but they had to do some analysis of those soils, but.
All right, now fast forward to this $12,500 that DEC wants us to spend.
Today, we're, the 12,5 includes the redesign to, to satisfy the town of Perrington's request, as well as the update of the emergency action plan and submission of the engineering assessment that is now due in 2015. So we're, we're ahead of the game on that one.
And then thereafter, how often are we doing this again? 10 years?
The next engineering assessment has to be done in 10 years. We have a binder now where we do our annual certification to them that everything's okay and take pictures. And that's all. This is, this is the bible of owning a dam. And we, a lot of the stuff's done by, Mark, Mark has been sending me annual reports.
So just out of curiosity, if the dam was not declassified, if Tony and did not lead that charge, and if we didn't move forward and declassify that dam, what, what dollar value would be looking at as far as hypothetically paperwork?
The spillway requirements change dramatically from A to B to C. Even at a B, we have to design for 150% of 100-year storm going over the top of a spillway. It would be almost double that requirement on a Class C because of the concern for the loss of life if that dam were to breach.
Just continue to be astounded.
I don't make this stuff up, honestly.
Not surprised that DEC has that kind of.
The good, I mean, the good news through this, the good news through this is, is through a lot of hard work, certainly this board authorizing, Jeff working with Barton La Judas, and we went through, we went through that selection process, if you recall, and we thought that Barton La Judas was the best at the time to get us where we needed to be out of the three or four people that we interviewed, and that proved to be right because we did get it declassified. And so from that end of things, that has saved us significant dollars, period. However, it hasn't come with some other added surprises as part of the, as part of the inspection process.
And we're basically at the mercy of the DEC. I mean, there's no recourse other than to just do what they tell you to do or you don't get approval.
Right.
And so, so take it, so just take it, take it a step further. So, life's always about choice. So if we did nothing at all, we just said, you know what, we believe what we've done this far, you know, meets the needs, protects folks downstream, and we're not going to do any more, what, what potentially happens after that?
DEC would commence a legal action, fine us, take us to court.
And then that, in that fine.
Throw us to the mercy of the judges.
And that, and that fine, and that fine would be on a per day typically, which is typically a per day basis until such time as the matter has been resolved to the satisfaction of the requirements of the dam classification.
Yes, just like they would issue a consent order in a municipality for not meeting effluent limits from a wastewater treatment plant, they would do similar action with us.
So our, our alternative is, is that, you know, there is really no alternative unless, unless you want the current supervisor to go to jail. So if you want the current supervisor to jail, we, we do nothing, and then the next supervisor coming in can decide they'd like, they'd like to go to jail too.
You have a new budget line that's.
Can we take a vote in it? No, please, I don't, I don't think, no, I don't, I don't want to.
But it is, Rob's point is well taken in terms of continuing to see that DEC does have extensive, you know, control and authority over what's going on with respect to the environment.
Okay, so that being the case, what's before us is an additional $12,500. I wanted to make sure Jeff and I had the opportunity to have this conversation with you, and then if you're in agreement, then what we would do is we'd do a town board resolution amending the original resolution, authorizing me to sign an updated contract, you know, for not to exceed this amount, subject to the approval by the town attorney.
Okay.
So if we do that, we'll have it for a resolution on the 6th. Don't knock yourself out for this Friday because we've got that fifth, fifth Wednesday of the month, so it'll be due a week from this Friday, so.
Okay.
But we'll get that resolution into the clerk's office. Okay. And then we will officially name the dam. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, which is petition mowing behind Pentagon Circle. This was tagged for Ronnie Williams, but I think what I'd like to do is, I've got the information for questions that have come up on this through conversations with Ronnie, and I might ask Rob to take, to take the lead on this as he's been involved with this, so then we can, you know, decide what our next course is.
Thank you, Tony. As we all know, we did receive the petition, maybe it was a month ago, probably a month ago now, just before July 4th, and that weekend, I did reach out to Mary Oakes, who was one of the presenters that night, and I did have an opportunity to meet with her Saturday, the 5th, I believe, at her house, and I did walk the land, met a couple of the residents, and I, I definitely got a better perspective of what they were referring to with, with some of the, the height of the, the grass and then the frequency of the mow. So, you know, in, in speaking with them, you know, I also, I doubled back with Tony and I just spoke with him about some options out there, and we were, you know, coincidentally, we were also able to get the lawn mowed that following week, which I think helped, and part of it is, you know, stipulated on weather, but we were able to get out there and mow, and I think we've been out there one additional time since. So what they are looking to do is obviously have it more frequently mowed, and, you know, in speaking with the residents, I, I can't disagree with how it did look. I can imagine their perspective, living there and having the town out there on a regular basis, and then the contrast to this year. So what I would suggest, and I think that this would, would go well with at least Mary and her resident, her neighbors, would be to resume the mow schedule similar to what it was last year, at least through the end of this season, so, you know, through mid-September or maybe up to October, depending on how the weather, the weather goes. And then as we move through this budget cycle, September, October, and into the winter, then we can review where we are. I mean, again, I, when I was out with Mary and her neighbors, I was talking about how this was a pilot program that the board put into effect this year to see what cost reductions and savings there would be in the long term, and so. So I think she was amenable to that. I wanted to just present that idea, that my suggestion would be to resume whatever mow schedule was last year, and then review this matter during the winter, obviously speak with the highway superintendent, the board, and see where we fall come next year.
And, and just, just for the boards, just an update on, on just the mowing piece altogether. We've got currently mowing broken into three components. Our weekly mow, and that's approximately 130 acres, we do that with in-house staff. Our bi-weekly mow is 42 acres, and our field mow is approximately 40 acres. We do that 80 acres with our contract. The, the, the mow for this area last year was bi-weekly. For the mowing cycle for this year, it was not to be mowed because there were no recreation, and the reason for the recommendation back from D P W was there was no recreation, field play, anything like that. It was basically a drainage way, we've got a pipe back there and what have you. So the intent was not to, to mow at all. Highway has mowed, as Rob had indicated, twice, so for us to do a bi-weekly mow from this point through the end of this growing season will add probably less than $1,000 to do that. And so if the board is agreeable to that, I'll take that back to D P W and have them then resume with the only caveat being that if it's significantly wet where they can't get back there, and that's, that was the only caveat when we were mowing it in the past, is that if it was wet and we couldn't get back there, you know, it might go instead of every two weeks, maybe every three weeks or so, but we'll go back, we'll go back to that cycle through the end of this year.
And the residents there are very reasonable, they acknowledge that as, you know, understanding that certainly that's the case, that weather-dependent and drainage-dependent, that it was not an issue for them. But I wanted to commend Rob for, on a holiday weekend, going out there promptly to, to meet with the residents. We heard back from residents who were very pleased, not only with his outreach efforts within the neighborhood, but with the result. So it's, I want to thank Rob for reaching out and doing that.
For sure. You know, I'm for this, but at the same time, you know, D P W made the recommendation not to, to cut the grass, and maybe with more information that we've heard from the petition and you talking, maybe that shouldn't have been slated as such because they did say it is a route that kids take to Scrivener, they go over there to the playground and stuff like that. I mean, there, there is utilization of that. It's not just a field, it's something that they, well, the neighbors actively use.
With a casual use than a formal.
Yeah, it's just the, the fact that we take this out of the, of the bunch after saying we were going to do this as a pilot, you know, and then look back after, look at it after it's all said and done. Now, this is going out of the mix because it's going to be cut. I, I'd rather see some findings, if you will, that we see that as, as an area that isn't like the others, that it's somehow utilized by the neighbors in a fashion that they came before us because of that, and we didn't know that ahead of time when the D P W made the recommendation.
Yeah, I think the D P W, I think the D P W, you know, based it, based their findings on the observed use.
Yeah.
And so, maybe an alternative, maybe an alternative as, as we look at it at the end of the season is, is that, you know, do we look at a mowing schedule that might cut walkways through there, you know, versus, you know, versus the total mow type of thing.
Or some sort of maybe D P W doing a more detailed canvassing of the areas where it's, it's not just a, you know, what is a formal field use, but, you know, is it close to a school? Or is it, is it close to sidewalks? Is, you know, is there some indicia of it being utilized casually but being put to use by, by the neighbors that have bought it? So I think I would agree, some sort of, you know, canvassing of, of those properties, maybe just a, a look through, a follow-up on, on as we analyze how it went this year across the board.
Okay. All right. I'll ask Ronnie and team to put it back on. That, that will be, in the past, that was mowed by town staff. This will be mowed by the contractor.
Yep.
So similar to what we do for all our bi-weekly and all of our field mow. So, okay.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to the end of the agenda. We've got the start of the, the agenda for the 13th with a holdover for Five Mile Line Road Cafe, Jackson Road, and specifically around land dedication, but before that will be special improvement district pond ownership, so we'll put that up. Seeing no other business come before the board, the board will stand adjourned at 7:59 PM. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.